Yeah.
Well, I'm coming in halfway. All the reports, well, it wouldn't accept them. You overtake? No, I'm not going to. As of this morning, it's showing five. Six to seven and it's closer to seven.
Thank you for being here. Now, Lord, prayers that remain standing in our place. I bear the thought of God, we just pause. Thank you for all the blessings. God, we, we enter into this meeting, Lord, we ask that you be present. And your spirit be with us. God, we thank you for the decisions and leading us and guiding us and. God, I thank you for every employee represented by the county. Lord, I thank you for these being here and all of your office. Everyone involved in this process, Lord, can bring us some. God, we thank you for being with our lives and the things that you ask that you just. Lord, we thank you for the good rain that you give us. Lord, we know every blessing comes from you. God, we ask that we, that you just lead us and guide us, make us always walk in your favor to see in your life. God, we always be obedient. Lord, we ask you that you be with us. We continue your blessings, Lord.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
But I got a pocket hide for prayer students. I want you to get their sleeves down. And it is going to be a long week. We're going to be here for a while. And I order to prepare everybody. Some may draw a committee, some may draw a lot. We're going to be here for a while. I'll order the Fenton County Commissions Court to order a witness at terms of the second, twenty twenty, at nine oh five A.M. Mount Forman's factory with all members looking forward to press. Out of number two, discuss the center dispensing with the reading of minutes of the meetings of the Commission Court approval time for August seventeenth, August nineteenth, and August twenty fourth, twenty four. Seven minutes for four year. Of this. Say, oh, Joe, they got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Brown. Soon as. On August seventeenth. When I read the minute, I think. Try that when I was. August seventeenth. The Congress hearing on the matter of the proposed budget. It don't tell us anything. It just. You got the Mr. Miss Spencer, the big black one. But we voted to modify. We vote, we voted to modify.
Do you want me to read chapter?
Well, we're the person with, I believe, the minute we're perusing. Where's that motion will be the act of. Okay, I did that was the direction. I did. Any. Got a reminder. Uh, Tim. We had the motion leave to, with that. To add that vote and modify to the August seventeenth on the public. The Congress Public hearing on the matter. That motion. Include that. Voted to modify.
Oh, we should. I'm hoping the stack. Although soon, uh, it's not noted in here that. On Tuesday, it is on the stage. It is Tuesday. And so it's a record case.
Yeah, I just want to be, I just give a brief record. I'm shooting. Okay. Any other questions? Correctance, addition. Being none of all admirers say aye, aye. Those votes same time. Motion period. Out of number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as admitted. So, okay, we got motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner Melvin. Any questions or discussion? Being none of all admirers say aye, aye. Those votes same time. Motion period. Out of number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as admitted. You have the list of bills to be ratified. So, Lou, we got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none of all admirers say aye, aye. Those votes same time. Motion period. Out of number five, general business. Is there any general business we, we need, we might wire up? Any outbursts or anything? Being none of all, out of number six, uh, some comments, Scott, did anybody sign up for? Nobody. No, do you have anyone sign up? No. I do have, uh, Vicki the counselor came to the labor. Uh, she's going to speak on. I don't believe, I don't believe. There is a, uh, public comment on. We want to make a recess from the Commission Court to conduct a public hearing on the twenty twenty tax rate. With record flex. We opened up the public hearing on the twenty twenty tax rate at nine eleven A.M. A tax rate of point five eight zero four two eight for hundred dollar high valuation has been proposed by the governing body of this county. For overall tax rate. Uh, point five eight zero four two eight for hundred dollars. The revenue rate. Was a point five 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 six one nine for hundred dollar valuation. The voter approval rate. Is one eight zero four two nine for hundred dollar valuation. What that is, you have a whole tax rate. We're proposing. The revenue rate with a tax rate, that's a new term, they did propose, that's the. Actually, the tax rate is bringing exactly the same amount of money that we did last year. And then the voter approval tax rate of point five eight zero four two five hundred. That's the voter approval tax rate, which is a three and a half percent. The revenue rate is the tax rate for, for the twenty twenty year that would bring the same amount of property tax rate value for revenue for Fenton County from the same properties in both the two thousand nine pink tax year and the two. And the twenty twenty tax year. The voter approval rate is a high rate for Fenton County may adopt when I open the election. Over the rule of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the revenue tax rate. This means that Fenton County is proposing an increased property taxes for the twenty twenty tax year. A public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be dealt on September the second, twenty twenty nine. We started at nine eleven. Fenton County, Texas, County Courtroom. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval rate. As a result, Fenton County is not required to hold an election, at which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. However, you may express your support or opposition to the, uh, proposed tax rate during this, uh, public hearing. Say that our. I'm asking commissioners, we're having a public hearing. God, Commissioner. We should talk about five, five, five eight. Are you complying with no greater than three percent increase? We're gonna have. Yeah, give it a half. Yeah, we're complying. Yes. We're under the. Yeah, that's. Washington, that's what. The. The, that, that point five 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 six one nine, revenue rate. Okay. That makes back sign. No, the voter approval tax rate is the one you're referring to, which is point eight zero four two nine. That is the three and a half, that is the. That, that is the three and a half percent. If you cannot go. It's automatic. You're supposed to be voted automatically. You can go three and a half. So, if there's anyone, it is a public meeting, you don't have to silence, speak here. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the proposed, uh, tax rate? During this public hearing?
That's a good question, Commissioner Jones, and I appreciate that. Because this, uh, this. New. Way of ignoring the people about their taxes is supposedly so simple and supposedly so great and fair. And it is more confusing and several men before. It's a mess of politics. And, and when Grace actually asked that question, that's where we, we wanted. And that, that's just like this, uh, voter approval thing. That's just a two voter approval thing. There's one without elections and there's one with, with an election. But they don't reach that. The hand right goes down. Uh, we, we step on a rail from where the election was necessary. He's one. Cause he's through that. And we, and we thought I'd read his mail. But that much. In the side of that. What Adam said is it would be no new way to increase. If you come in, we've got property, well, thirty eight percent in value. Tax rate and the value is what, if your tax rate. Might just relate itself. So, what I did happen, they. Those words, all the more money.
You know, the, the reason that happened though, Johnny. Uh, in Senate Bill Two, it was passed in the last legislature. One of the, one of the things said that they, the counties could only raise the rates a maximum of three and a half percent. The schools could only raise theirs a maximum of two and a half percent. And the reason they said that was because they said, we're going to give the schools more money from the state. However. The counties or the schools could not receive that money unless the property in the, in the county was valued at current estimates. In other words, you couldn't. If you weren't valued at what it, what it was. Then instead of the schools, I don't give you money from the state. So, the state saying, you don't collect your taxes, but they never really didn't. Appreciate that.
And that's what's confusing for this whole time. Let me tell you, Ron, they want a hollow kind of parent. But this is totally confusing because you're going to get to here the next meeting where we raise tax. Well, we ordered the tax rate. If you look at that, that tax rate is three seats lower than it was last year. But. The way they do it is you're going to see in here that it's an increase of four point something for forty seven. Okay? Well, that's new property, new houses, new property being built. And Fenton County pushes it up there. But it seems confused. If you don't set it at three and a half, set it at three and a half, where everyone understands. It, it.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. You need to get that up here. I can't. I can't. That, that, I, I can't. I'm gonna call this. I forgot how to tell it to do it like that. But. The, uh, this, uh, on August seventeenth, twenty twenty, the Commission Court proposed this tax rate of point five eight zero four two eight uh, for twenty twenty one budget year. Then Bill Two brought a change in the hearing process and required only one public hearing for the tax rate in that this hearing. You know, we used to have two. Uh. So, is there anyone that you pay all the taxes now? Is anyone want to pack it? We have a packet with a CDM third with all the tax rates and stuff in it that Scott I have provided. You know, and one thing I like to do. You know, it's awesome. They, 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 they remount all the years, the past laws. And. Be doing that. They. They, 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 they remount all this stuff. But, but it's totally confusing for them. And I, and I told, I'll call, uh, our senator, right senator, yes, you do. And I said, but call it in that three and a half percent, you cannot go up three and a half percent. But it does not include taxes. So, I said, would you agree with me? That you just encourage county and cities to borrow money? If it's not included in that three and a half percent. Then it looks like we just spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the deal out there. We have been, Fenton County would have been better off financially to borrow the money for that, which we didn't, we paid tax. We, we've been very conservative of our money. And he said, I agree. It has encouraged the counties and cities to, to borrow money. Well, that's what we're going to do, to, to survive. At the expense of the tax pay. That, that's correct. That was a little bit like. They say that you. Now, I would say that this year, uh, the Commission Court, my law. There's a clause in the law that says, if you're, if the state is under disaster, natural ruin, you don't have to stay at three and a half, you can go to the eight. These commis, this Commission Court. Sign, uh, proclamation or resolution. Ask them and send to the governor. Ask them not to reprise, uh, by this issue. Use it, send it to use your January the first, two thousand and nine. Add the approvals and just leave because there's a lot of people suffering out here, this COVID in this, uh, coronavirus. They have zero tracking. But the Commission Court did ask not to raise the, uh, price. We can win to eight percent and not anything. I mean, my law will give it a range of eight percent. This Commission Court obligated to keep it three and a half. Don't, don't exceed the three and a half. So, I'm telling you. Win to eight percent this year. Uh, but this Commission Court says people suffering, they're, they're struggling, and we need to recognize it. I follow. We're, we're going to. That's staying, uh, compelled. They. Is there anybody else on that? Any, any other comments, questions about the tax rate? Is it like, well, I'm here. It's your period. Is there a comment saying you were going to cover in that? That raises your question. That's it, that's what we're discussing. Everybody. As a acting. In the United States. And projected. Or twenty, what is the reserve about? What, six hundred thousand? What's it going to be under the due date? Are you, are you talking about? Are you talking about the reserve? You're talking about, you're going to these creeps or not these creeps? During this year, are you talking about our reserve here? But we won't know what through the, my opinion is that we hear our audit. Oh, yeah, twenty, 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 yes. Now, we'll start, soon as we get through this budget, we'll go in, Sandy, we'll go in through the audit process and hell knows what we come up. I can tell you right now, it's, uh, we're in there for a while, Sandy. I think we're about three and a half million. Right now. Uh. I think, I think it, I think there's one completely pushing over. When we get through with that audit. I said, and I know there's this ballpark figure. Uh, ballpark figure. I heard six. Oh, no, we're not. So, we were. Be not. So, that makes, these makes what they're talking about. Uh, I wonder, I wonder. It actually, uh, from our expenses, this budget, we're, we're on a tax rate. This public chairman is a tax rate. Uh, no, it's, we're. No, no, trust me. We, we don't have a range. We won't waste. No. And you have the house, um, reserved. Now, I think, like Texas is in a mess. The kind of schools, two and a half percent. Said, well, we know the next session, we're going to have to take in more money. Uh, could have the schools. What they didn't trigger was some of the trouble. So, there was tax in the state of Texas, that dropped. Okay, you, you just like taking money. Now, your money is dropped. Uh, it. And. Our law, the Commission Court, we have hired for COVID and our budget, usually, we, we hired part, we. It really didn't have. This is a tax rate. Don't give any other questions over this tax rate. Yeah. We actually go over to the tax rate, and they just answer. Yeah. It's all forever. We, you know, you're not going to win. But also, the state's going to say, we're not paying that, they can't even understand. So, they're going to enforce the true and hack that thing. It's going to take away from them. And I remember that, when we were talking about, we had no money. We were like, bro. When we ended up. We got a three cent increase on the bridge. Which, um, we didn't dig it, and we ended up with three hundred thousand more than we had to spend. Well, I have, that's, that's a close, but when I'm here, you're not here. And that's the profit on the taxpayer. I agree a hundred percent. I agree, honey. You call it that directly, well. But at the same time, you have to have the county in a position. So that if you do have an emergency, you don't have to go out and borrow money and punish the taxpayer. I'm just, I don't want to jail. And, and we have the money for paperless. Yes. And I agree, we keep the state keys. Pushes up, anytime that they don't have the money, I mean, they push down to the county to pay. And they give you some money the first year. Not enough in the other, but they give you some money. And then they start quiddling on that money every year. While the cost of whatever you need continues to rise. And. I'm hearing, Roblin, this year that they're going to walk the counties to take over the, the driver license division. Okay, for the D X. But it's coming, it will, that first of your company is not covered. Or that's my prediction. And then, and then every year from back to forth on. While the cost of that continues to rise, they'll keep cutting and cutting, cutting the tax money, opening years and out of county. The tax rate, the random county will be punished. That's my. If you can figure out how to give them the listen. I'm all of us. Have a label like to sue the state. It's something they now suing. Uh, Harris County, they lost the functional. And Jackson says, they're doing that, opening up. Well, they, well, we got nothing to do with. Anybody can vote, anybody that wants to, whether they're a citizen, not a citizen, next one. He said. That's the state to him, which he does. Why can't we as a county have something in there? Sue them. I have, yeah, but I would request another tax rate. Yeah. Well, I think, you know, any of the. On the tax rate. You have, you, you get a thing with tax rate. She got you too. Anybody else on the public hearing for the twenty twenty tax rate? Okay. Being none of that will conclude the public hearing on the twenty twenty tax rate in the aisle thirty.
Out of number eight, discussion and consider approval confirmation for Constitution Week. Uh, the Department of the District Courts. Identify yourself.
My name is Betty Wilson. I'm ranging at, uh, the National Service Chancellor, uh, Dr. Jefferson Revolution. And I'm here today to request a proclamation declaring the week of September the seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution Week for Fenton County.
Okay. There's a proclamation. Here is the, raised by the county Commission Court, where the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties and bodies, the principles of liberty of government, United Republic. Dedicated to rule of law, and whereas September the seventeenth, twenty twenty, March the two hundredth, and the third third. Anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official, official recognition of that one and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate. Whereas public model nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation, which here about the President of the United States of America, designated September the seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution. Is there a motion to approve of the following? We got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson.
Second, second by commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being done, all in favor to say aye. Aye. Both at the same time. Motion period. Now therefore, I'm not prepared by part two of the Department of Defense to be as. Judge of the county of Benet. Who hereby proclaim the week of September the seventeenth through the twenty third as constitution week. As our citizens reaffirm by ideas, the framers of the constitution habits seventeen page seven. Taking the privilege guarantee to us for this guardian of our liberty. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Out of number nine, discuss and consider proof and proclamation for charge final of birthday. Will you identify yourself?
Morning.
Go ahead.
I'm Carrie Walworth and I'm president of the Academy of Justice Captain. Of the National Society of the United States Brothers of the War of eighteen twelve. War of eighteen twelve was a significant time for our country because it's considered the second American revolution. When we were protecting our rights on the sea. Francis, a young man named Francis Scott Key, who was born in seventeen seventy nine at Terabuga in Frederick County, Maryland. He became a successful warrior in Maryland and Washington, D C. And was later appointed to U S Attorney General for the District of Columbia. On the eighteenth of June, eighteen twelve, the U S declared war on Great Britain after a series of trade disagreements. In August of eighteen fourteen, British troops invaded Washington, D C. And burned the White House, the Capitol Building, and the Library of Congress. Their next target was Baltimore. One of Key's friends, Dr. William Beans, was taken prisoner by the British. He went to Baltimore, located the ship where Beans was being held and was negotiating with the link. He and Beans weren't allowed to leave the ship until after the British bomb garden in Fort. He watched the bombing campaign unfold from aboard a British ship located about eight miles to the way. After a day, the British were unable to destroy Fort McHenry and gave up. He was inspired by the sight of a lone U S flag still flying over Fort McHenry. Daybreak on the fourteenth of September of eighteen fourteen. He sang a poem entitled The Defense of Fort McHenry, which was played with jazz music. The rocket strangled air, the bombs burst into the air. Gave criticism of the time that our lives were still there. In nineteen thirty one, the Charles Henry Band recame to the United States. That's for Patrick conditions and tax court. We request a proclamation declaring September fourteenth as Charles Henry Band.
We do have a proclamation presented, read towards September fourteenth, twenty twenty, March the two hundred and sixth anniversary of riding the Starfleet. He. On him on in the war of eighteen twelve. America's second and final war for independence. Whereas on March the third, nineteen thirty one, Keys and Walt. Were officially declared the national anthem of the United States of America by House Resolution number fourteen. I need a public law, see twenty three by President. Hoover. Whereas, whereas. It was a sight. Of the large thirty by forty two foot Starfleet under flag waving over Fort McHenry. That directly inspired Francis Scott Key to impose the words of that act. Whereas the national anthem and the American flag have evolved to become the strongest symbols. Spirit and resolve of the American people. Over the last two centuries. Whereas many. Millions of Americans cherish and respect the currently accepted by both words and music of the Starfleet. Such version being the service sergeant prepared. In nineteen eighty, by the Lord of Parks, produced in army and native songbooks and whereas sporting and public convention begin with the same play. The national anthem. Firmly facing the. Patriot's people. Love of country. Is there a motion of proof? Always a. Broken by commissioner Brown, second by commissioner Melton. All in favor say aye. Aye. Both at the same time. Motion period. Now therefore, the county commissioners of Benet County, Texas, who hereby proclaim September fourteenth, twenty twenty, Starfleet. Benet County and to all citizens to recognize and celebrate the birthday of our national anthem. With Starfleet. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you talk to? Precedent about that?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. I guess you told I called there.
Can we get our.
We can. This is your period. I'll come there.
We got on your. Look. You can't go to here to my bed. No, we're right there. I mean, this is.
We're all shot. You want to hold one?
Yeah.
You want to hold one? Yeah. I have to call you left. All right, here we go. One, two, three. We're about. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night.
Oh, stop wanting to move up there. Do the best I can. Where's what yet? You're welcome to stay with the rest of the meeting, but you. We understand.
I didn't leave. He addressed you with his.
Thank you. We like you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Out of number ten, discuss and consider burn by. Okay. Also, I do know where we're going. Okay. Our number, if you see, he passed up. She, uh, burned me. Five and six. Never supported for age. See, I haven't before. Therefore, we got off. We're voting for it. I've got a motion by commissioner Melton, the title, second, who's ten, second by commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion for any? Being done, all in favor of taking it out of number ten, say aye. Pass both at the same time. Motion period. Out of number eleven, discuss and consider the adoption of Benet County budget. For fiscal year twenty one, beginning October first, twenty twenty, and even September the thirtieth. Twenty twenty one. The, uh. This is our. They've spent a lot of work with this budget. Any hours we're speaking. Right until this moment. This budget, the twenty one that's. Opened here for adoption. Is a good. Benet County is in a. Good financial position. Uh, this this budget, twenty twenty one budget. Uh, for the general fund. Be a red view of fourteen million. Eighty three thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars. Expenses, uh, thirteen million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty two. That leaves a difference. Of three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Of six, three hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Less than expenses than what you have in Britain. And that's where the commissioner court required, we don't know what. The COVID. Is going to do to the. The tax collection of Benet County. But this year, there's a lot of people. Uh, citizens struggling. But we get required for a public short model. In this. And, you know, Ron, you've watched it for years. We, we sat here. And you think so, the British doesn't hide it with numbers on bricks. The numbers are rich.
A real man.
These numbers are rich. The. My team, and no one watching the budget, nobody, the numbers, if if a branch order. And like the revenue to. Or lower the expense from you, it don't even. I can tell you for sure. Over the six years. That I've been here, we that was very, very hard to get a true budget. Uh. And I believe those are real. Uh, Benet County. As we said, we're working. License went to eight percent. Uh, but we did, we cited a three and a half percent. Uh. As I said, we asked the governor. Not to. Reap any taxes this year. A few last years. Uh. It wasn't good. Uh. This budget also includes a three percent pay increase for elected officials and employees. Now. And there's good discussion about that. Uh, I think Benet County, if you know. Everything like these costs. You're competing, that county's competing against all these other counties. The Ds, D Ls. Employees. And. We, and so we felt like this was an opportunity. And we didn't. And we felt like this is an opportunity to close that one. But from the other. Yeah. Uh. You know, you. From the sheriff's department, we had the, the. Suicide department over elections. You get these people trying to, it takes. It takes. More than one year to get a trying, and you buy the getting trying doesn't. They're willing to drive them to next county. Your work, I'm not a waffle. So, uh. It doesn't, it, so this budget does reflect a three percent pay increase for elected officials and employees. We did, this budget did. Increase. Uh. The annual tax percentage that Roman Bridge gets. Uh, you know, their twenty two percent, I worked twenty two percent last year. It raised it to twenty three percent. They entered. Roman Bridge of the annual tax. When we hit twenty three. And add a question, a hundred and forty four thousand more dollars. Into Roman Bridge. Our employees' insurance. Uh. Went up about, uh, all our three thousand dollars this year. Insurance. Off. That's one thing that Benet County. Been reluctant to do, start charging their employees for part of their insurance. Some of these counties that we get compared to, we owe you over here, might be six, nine dollars a month. And you also, I worry the insurance of them. Benet County pays all of their employees. In here. Of the insurance went up with your, our sixty thousand dollars. That's reason you cannot say that no new rent, if you try to say that no new revenue rate. You're, you're going to buy. Uh, we're going to not cover the insurance. Roman Bridge comparable this year. Commissioners would tell you, we, we told you, it should went down. Due to the price of. But it went up. Roman General this year. Actually went up. Due to, when you question. Actually, whatever they designed a new process of how you do your time. Oh, my guessing. And if they got better than that. So they make more guessing, which would have that cost. Then, my fault. So. We would have, we would have thought that Roman General price calls would seem down. Uh, that's another reason you can't say that. There's no way you can say at the end of the revenue rate. Uh, you might do it in one year. But then you're going to be behind eight all the next year. Uh. And this budget also, uh, purchases like pre-legal for crime line. All this. Uh. We've got a process, we've got. Uh, a pre-legal. For the constables, one of the five years. One tax rate got punished. And pardon I was. And we saw all the, all the commissioners of. Constables of the. This year was about fifty or five marshal. And then that year was started with. Constables. Our debt. In this budget. Today, our debt is, uh, two billion, eight hundred dollars. At the end of this budget, I think, once we get through this, the budget doesn't prove. Uh. Over the borders of next year. Our debt will be one million, forty five thousand. I'm hoping that coming this past year. Uh, whether we can do that in five, over five, it's going to take. Ever been a lot of years. When I walked in, it was eight point seven. That's two, two billion. Everyone comes up, not, I didn't even sneaker. Uh, my code is that debt. Is there any things else from other budgets? With like pouring out or running out? It's a highlight alert. Saying any place? All quiet today.
Does that make a motion that we. The office prepared a budget that you could grant that will begin October the first, twenty twenty. And even September thirty, twenty twenty.
Now, voted by commissioner Pearson, second by Virgil. It doesn't need to be a record vote.
Um, don't.
Yes.
Let me take that note. I thought the end and this exact wording on, on the, uh. Adoption.
I'm a little bit opposed to Benet County budget for your twenty one, one big.
Second. Okay. Oh, second. You said that, yes, so that's. My vote is aye. Uh, Brandon Brown. I'm. Uh. Commissioner Melton. Commissioner Pearson, aye. Commissioner Webb, aye. Was your unanimous? Okay, did it, Terry? Is there anybody else who can tell on that? Budget. Record vote. Okay. Out of number four. Out of number four, discuss and consider adoption of twenty twenty tax rate for Benet County and order savings of tax rate. Uh, we. We know we're. And that would be the tax rate. Point five eight zero four two eight. I guess we're going to hear that language. That I learned since I walked in here. Judge.
I made a motion that we put the tax rate. Free to deliver me a high policy. I'm moving the property tax rate being increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point five eight oh four two eight, which is effectively. A four point four seven percent increase in the tax rate. This category includes point oh three six two oh eight for bed service.
Okay. Okay. Second, I have a motion by commissioner Brown. Second by commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? With the vote factor. Being done, all in favor say aye. And both at the same time. Motion period. We got to be judges. Yeah, well, not. I hold the budget actually. Out of number thirteen, discuss and consider court to wrap up property tax increase reflected in this budget. Those. Saying that tax rate there will generate. One million, fifty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty two. Uh, more. Uh, oh, they got. Five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty five is new profit. Will I make that motion?
I make that motion to be ratified, Mr. Wilson. Yes, sir. I move that the property tax increase reflected in Van Nuys County budget for this year, twenty twenty one, be ratified.
Second, is, second, second by Commissioner Webb. Any questions or discussion? Let me just say, I appreciate you, Commissioner. I think we got Commissioner, uh, we have Commissioner for, we worked on this budget, the property tax, it's a, I would like, I would be, especially all, thank you for the work you've done and all the results. There's been a lot, we've spent a lot of time in the business, in the business budget, and the property taxes, I just personally want to say publicly, thank you for the time and energy. I think I speak on behalf of all of us, the honor, the privilege to serve the citizens of Van Nuys County. As the lady said, of course, I trust you, and that, and that's, and that's. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in heart, so ratifying the property tax increase reflected in this budget, so they opt, those are both same time, motion period. Out of number fourteen, discuss and consider them to be in line with the common contract of NCIC, the bed services, to include video visitation, text messaging, and extended contracts period by two years. McAnney, do you want to press a court?
Yes.
Okay. McAnney, he is a, you, Tyler?
The gentleman, Fred, yeah, the insurance officer. Um, basically, what this does is, when they did their initial proposal for common contract, they had a section there for, uh, additional services. There was no cost accounting, they, uh, installed, uh, kiosks in all the jails or touchscreens. Which allowed us to save manpower on jailers, run requests for on grievances, this type of thing, back for, maybe do that on their sale, record of it. No more keeping stack paper, uh, when the COVID nineteen is, the governor suspended, get back visitation. They called us back, we'd like to be a part of their pilot program, video visitation, text message, who said yes? So, they updated the software after last, once they had video visitation, this is a kiosk, uh, they've been working this much out of it. And now they got it where they want it to be at, and they're just asking them to end the contract, include those, uh, as the rates that will be hidden. Thirty one cents a minute for video visitation, twenty five cents for text messages, and thirty five cents for text messages that has a picture attached. We receive twenty five percent of the gross earnings from that.
So, so it's, these are in, in my title?
Yes. It's a, it's a touchscreen, it's enclosed in a steel fan chill case, it's, you know, and they have to log in. Every day they log into it, they can see their text messages, their family members, and they can send text messages to their family. They can't just send to anybody, the visitor has to go through NCIC's set up account. That allows them to communicate back and forth, and it automatically shut down on, I don't know, we have to sort of do it in jail. I don't know how, a little face-to-face visitation once that's opened back up. But we've had, they just login on their phone, just like on FaceTime, or other top apps, and they can hear tape, one to twenty minutes at a time, and they're all recorded. Monitor it. Anything that's, uh, not allowed, we can go in and block that person for hearing tape.
What, what can we do with it? That's kind of what I'm wondering, uh, how, what's going to prevent someone from seeing that inappropriate?
I have to go through, want somebody else in the jail, have to go in and review and approve every picture that they were seeing.
What did that add to you? What did that just add, runs more to it?
No, it's, it's a real simple process, we have a whole, learn computer all day, either back in the jail or up in front office. Uh, it'll largely hate us if they do message you, if they want it for good, they're free.
Well, all the people, something inappropriate to the night.
Well, that's, that's.
Judge. Mr. Pearson, you have.
Yeah, I, I went to this a couple days ago, and, and I got a chance to talk to a new captain. I have some concerns about it, because my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain, that these videos, when they do video visitations, is not real time logged.
Yes, it is.
So.
Now, they're, they're, they have access to it beyond, or there, or we do have difficulty to monitor, uh.
You have the ability, if you tell me that every video is being viewed at the app.
I have that.
Yeah, I have some real concerns about it. The other counties that I'm aware of, that are using this type of system, they still, and I understand it doesn't cut down to Van Nuys, they, they will, maybe there's a different way to do it. But the other counties, the, the kiosk is not in the inmate's cell, they still gather the inmates, bring them to an area, sit them down in front of ten little kiosks, or eight little kiosks, and there's an officer or two officers behind them that can see every screen, and now, my concern is much like yours, Judge, we, we have the potential here for a lot of inappropriate things on these, and it's, it's not, and not only, not only inmates are in the cell block, and group, eight or ten, whatever, they can all see it. And, and sure, when we find out about it, but we find out about it after the fact, you know, there's no officer in there seeing it at the app. Um, I have a lot of concerns about, um, uh, I'd like to know whether any other counties are doing it, how they're do, how they're monitoring it, because let's say a, a woman does something inappropriate, something explicit, to allow to, to visit others in the jail. We find out about it after the fact, but he could have been distributed to ten other inmates in that pod before we've been able to shut it down. Um, I just think that, that I have a lot of concerns, um.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Once it's out, there it's out.
Once it's out, there it's out.
Would be better, it wasn't in the cell itself, you'd see out someplace where they could come out and see. From what I understand, jails that have it, separate locations, and they pull the inmates, they were exempt from the mandatory face-to-face visitation that normally occurs. There was a period of time, and certain jails had built areas of their jails where they didn't have to have in-person face-to-face visitation. They set up the technology to do it from a remote location, and then they stopped that. This will never take place, uh, face-to-face visitation. The kiosks were initially putting some cells or the ticketing system, request forms, that way, they send in a request form or a agreement for, to approve requests, that it would, you would have the access to it immediately, instead of having to go through several hands, it's sorted out. That's why the kiosks, they had the video visitation later on, and we can restrict the time period. And NCIC does have people that monitor the videos as well, and I can live, we can monitor a lot of them in jail at any time, if we choose to. I've gone back and I've watched pretty much, or sprinted through the videos throughout the day, and, uh, very beginning, we did have something to try to put on a little show. They were cut off, and then we had an app, it was any type of inappropriate material that person would do that. So, we did, though, we blocked several people, being able to log in, and, like I said, the inmate can't always go and set up a visiting cell, the visitor has to be ready to act.
I'm, I'm sure, but, you're going to have inmates in there, it's, 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 you're going to have kiosks, you're going to be, don't be, don't be.
Yes, sir. They fully maintain the place that they're in.
They need to, they, if you're going to do this, they need to propose a package, and you review it before it's seen.
I, and I agree, I think the text message thing is a great thing, I think it would cut down on the mail in and out, um, I think, I think that is a great thing. Um, I just have concerns about video communication that is not at that moment monitored, and, and you don't have the staff, I mean, you could have ten guys doing the video, ten inmates doing ten different video chats all day long, I mean, you have that people just dedicated to nothing but review those videos, um, unless it is, you know, centralized, like.
And, you know, you could have made an house, somebody called it, and, and, I mean, I've been in the house, but, and, and I think there's a lot of liability in this. Uh, you said each one of them had a code, the inmate had a code, are you living there?
Oh, here, so they sell each other's code.
They already did that on something.
Yeah, they do have a, they sell a code and send some inappropriate material to the side of the number with it, and it's, I think there's a lot of, I would, I would entertain typing things over it, and let, and let, I'm going to work with them and see, and then let's bring it back, yeah.
So, is it, is currently happening?
I agree. We have not had face-to-face visitation now, we have April, and this has reduced the amount of stress. Visitation is a big factor in reducing stress on the best portrait. So, them being able to see their loved ones face-to-face, talk to their kids, a big, a big part of that. If we did not have this, they did not offer this service to us, I'd hate to know what time it would be in that jail, being in there five months, not being with your kids, your spouse. On face-to-face visitations, they have to meet certain criteria, do their own instance. We can go in, we, limit face-to-face visitation to immediate family, yes, they, they can talk to their best friends, cousins, whoever, they can do that.
And, and I get, I get it, that, I mean, we've been affected by actual problems, all that, but, but I just don't like the liability side of it. I got, I got something, what would be wrong with you having to work, uh, kiosks, we would spend all, we have to have another general constable here, to, to run that.
Or you could schedule, like, you took the visitation room now, put some kiosks in there, once, just like the old visitation, whatever it was, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, from one to three, or you can do it in, like, a ball, or you can do it in, like, a ball, and there's an officer there behind them who can see what's on that screen, and you can see what the inmate is doing, so that he's not doing something inappropriate with these videos.
Well, even their face-to-face visitations, we don't have officers down there, or children.
Right, but there are any group of ten, of, of eight or ten on each side, I mean, you know, they're not in private where they could do something sexual, and, you know, if they get sexually there, there'd be like, like, twenty, or, or maybe, there are on each side of it, but.
Listen, Mike, I, I think, just, we want to take what it, especially for this, it may be a couple weeks, bringing back, but I think we do need to look at it.
Yes, I'll go up there, let you know, I just became aware of this earlier this week, I didn't even know, it was a thing until
Yeah.
You came up in conversation with my assistant, when I came in, said that, um, so, I'll get out there, look at it. Right now, I just have, I just have some concern about.
Yeah, I remember, I think it should have, I think it should have been possible for, 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 okay? But, is there a motion? I mean, okay, motion by Commissioner, now that there's a, a. Second, by Commissioner, with, any questions or discussion? You'll, you'll say that word, you, and, it's incredibly, uh, uh-huh, but isn't this the phone system that actually, the sheriff in that coming call, isn't this the phone system? That they do the.
Um, the phone, the commentary.
You know, I'm, I'm, this is, this is, yes, I, I'm, okay, I, okay, all right.
No, I, I'm glad Sheriff's, Sheriff, he's got, he's doing a great job, and just if I remember correctly, that issue was, when we did the initial proposal for phone system, that they did not include that. Because we didn't include that in the proposal, because I believe that what was discussed in the approach, was that properly, might have been, not, oh, that's, it was left out of the proposal.
Yeah, uh, I think it's, we, we.
I just want to see the campaign's.
I have a threat.
I think the comment was, it was technically, so, we, we included that in the proposal. So, well, the one is, I think it probably was.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of a payment, I don't know if we're, they say I, all right, those are both same time, motion period. Thank you, thank you, you did a great job, I know you got a finish option, because, and you had to research it more. Okay, thank you, sir. Out of number fifteen, discuss and consider the annual financial report for Van Nuys County Emergency Service District, number two. You have their report before you.
Yes, sir, because I'm looking at most of you to prove that.
Okay, second, you have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second, Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in heart, so they opt, so they're both same time, motion period. Out of number sixteen, discuss and consider all Roswell County did have to sign a service record with the prints, uh, for the statewide automated victim notification service. What idea that this, uh, the contract, if they buy contracts with the prints, provide that, and, and they send a contract that we need, that I would be, I don't sign contracts without you guys, but, the Office of the Attorney General, they, they're the ones that offered that, the, uh, statewide automated victim notification service, and then they just contract with the prints. The Office is, a motion to allow me to. To, the Office is, a motion to allow me to, authorize me to sign the service agreement with the Prince for the statewide automated victim notification service. Motion, period, we got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of the aye, those votes same time? Motion, period. I don't know, seventeen, discussing, consider donation of land served by, uh, present, uh, percentage three.
Uh, we actually do this law, I can put it number eighteen, uh, my thought, uh, eighteen, y'all, several months ago, or weeks ago, actually considered a donation of the third class. Dennis, something that happened, they can all accept it. And, uh, I told y'all that I'll do the, the, I was, it stands up the deed, preparation of the deed and the survey. Dennis called me in the, called up there and said, I, I'm in survey. So, I would also, that, all the nation, I'll say all that, I'm, so I'm here asking for an motion for the court to accept the survey of the people, but, several land is, first class is called me and that county that is on the north side, precinct three, Goldenway Magnificent. There, I was, I was talking about Commissioner Pearson, second, about Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion?
Being none, all in favor of the aye, those votes same time? Motion, period. I don't know, eighteen, discussing, consider final acceptance of donation of land from Willford County, third class, present.
Uh, yes, sir, man, it's actually my, we put it same way, that's the name of that county. Uh, this is, this is what I'm talking about, but now, Black, has to be, to, to do the final acceptance of this several land, this, well, several land runs on the north side of the precinct, Goldenway Magnificent. Uh, along with that, Mr. Turner, uh, she is the deed partner for us. And, so I have that deed, it's in the book, copy of it, I, I'm asking for the court to accept this deed and allow people to, 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 and the, and the front office transfer in this several land from the Willford County, uh, to that county, and that is motion.
I was thinking, just, you guys talking about Commissioner Pearson, second, about Commissioner Brown. Is there a lead? I would, I would believe you're hoping, I don't know, no. Okay, I'm talking down, I think, my, uh, the guy, I'm, 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 I can't believe he catches the spirit of this. So, she is. Uh, I would like to say, to Willford County, thank you, thank you, folks, that folks, that county. I did not know it had to be, they, uh, and, uh, we got the name on there, we're not going to do that. And, we will help the county, the county, it's good, we're all tied, you know, we're tied to it. And, so we like, this, the only cost is on, they, and I told them that, jokingly, I wish you, this is more a building, a fence. We're going to build a fence, that's the only cost. Well, I just want to say, thank you, and the pond, and the fence, for all of them. And we will be, actually, if you drive, we'll have time to deal with this. It is not much, so.
Yeah.
What's this, that, we have a motion, so I have a vote. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of consenting to donation of land from Willford County, third class, say aye, all right, those votes same time? Motion, period. I don't know, nineteen, discussing, consider, I am south, the Watford Water Corporation, water line in the county east, within the county, first, that county grows thirty-five, four.
Yes, sir, Judge, I'll explain this, but I'll start out with this plan, when it comes to, uh, a vote, I will not vote, I, on the board, of the, of the, uh, Watford Water Corporation, I will not be catching the vote. What they say is, uh, Watford Water has a pipe that's outside of Eden, that's on parallel, about, probably parallel to kind of thirty-five, fourteen, they're putting in the water line there, there's that Atlas, uh, operation gas line that crosses thirty-five, fourteen, that's Watford Water, it's going to have to go under. Atlas requires that, uh, that line can always be crossed at certain angle of that line. And so the order to do this, is from the side of Watford, to have the curve out into the old Eden for about nine feet, seven percent of the dent line, and then curve right back into the official vector. Like that cross that top line, that's the line, if we, uh, I just have you put, below the surface of ground, under the gas line, lay deep of our, uh, black soap there, and it would be in space. Uh, you're on board, you're going to do anything that's on board, they're having problems, they're going to defend, oh, that's a new line. So I don't see what they expect, the operation of that stuff. So I have a motion that they allow that to come out of, on this. We can go up first.
Do we have a motion, is it the same?
Do not move.
Yeah, you have a vote.
But Judge, I'm, I'll make that motion.
I can make a motion, okay, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll say it.
Motion by Commissioner, thank you, by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of the aye, those votes same time? Motion, period, so that one, yes, one beside. I don't know, twenty, discussing, consider approving Jeff, John, subdivision on Highway forty-seven?
Well, thank you, we go again, this is, uh, for, I'm part of, uh, territory for me, and I had some others. This is a subdivision that's going out at, at the time of print of one service name, it's going to be on the close trail, on Highway forty-seven, north of Willford, approximately five miles. Uh, for anyone that's, um, familiar with that, it's part of the, uh, home of the Blue Ranch. Uh, probably, this has been part of, since Mr. Thomas was putting in a subdivision that all the lots are greater than five acres. According to our current subdivision dozen, lots are greater than five acres, let's not let it be flat. So we're not selling lots, you're selling, that's the money. I did ask Mr. Thomas, because we're going to open, and it's closed, it's never, never leave a question for, for county to, nine ninety-four. I did ask him, so, uh, their protection, that it's easement, for sixty-five or growth, as an emergency, we're all in a situation with an emergency, and emergency vehicle can't get up in that road. He asked for a lot of that, he asked for a lot of that, from the Watford Water Corporation, that they're going to provide water, these on that, put in the water lines, and, and buy that property from, from that electric, the church will provide electricity. Here's one of my laws, I don't know if we made motion here, for their bank of mine, but if there is a motion, I will say I'm going to motion to accept it, easement, and its weather, and, and services provided in this, uh, in this subdivision.
Right, what is the subdivision's name?